Hello, everybody. Thank you for being here. This is going to be a roundtable conversation between members of the Black Indigenous and other people of color community in Bend with our Bend City Council candidate.
I guess you can take it away.
We have a little feedback on the sound, so if anybody has... Thank you for being here. This is going to be a roundtable conversation between members of the Black Indigenous and... Give us a second until we figure out the sound. So if anybody has two devices playing, please make sure you have one muted. So, welcome, everybody. My name is Joanne Mina. I use she, they pronouns. I identify as Afro-Mestiza. And I'm going to be helping us carry a conversation with Bend City Council candidates. We have diverse members of the community that are here wanting to have this conversation. So if you please introduce yourself, please do so if you feel comfortable. Please just tell us your name, how you identify, pronouns you like to use.
I'll jump in here. Hi there. My name is Kena Condon Chadwick, and I'm pretty new to Bend. I have a white partner. I am half Filipino, half white. I also have two mixed children, and my pronouns are they/them. And very much looking forward to connecting with folks here at Bend and doing my part to help support an inclusive environment here. Thank you for having us.
Any other member of the BIPOC community that would like to introduce themselves?
Hi, my name is Janet Yarandi. I identify as a queer Indigenous Latina. My pronouns are she/her/they/她们. And I am part of MECA-Bend, a nonprofit organization here in Oregon, in Bend, excuse me.
So I'll go. I'm Dalton Miller Jones with Restorative Justice and Equity here in Bend. Retired professor of developmental psychology, he/him are my pronouns. Eager to participate in this forum.
I can go. Xavier Borja, I identify as Latino Mexican. Both my parents are from Michoacan and Guerrero. I am with Latino Outdoors, as well as the Latino Outdoor Engagement Coordinator here in central Oregon. Yeah, thank you.
I forgot to say African American.
I can go next. I'm Katharina Barguil. I'll go by Kathy, Kathy. I'm a civil engineer for the city of Bend, but I'm here as a community member, really wanting to listen to all the candidates here on this call. My pronouns are she/her/they/them, and I identify as Middle Eastern and Latinx.
Thank you. Anybody else that would like to share?
I will. I'm Erica McAlpin. She/her/hers pronouns. And professor at Oyster Cascades and a co-founder of Love Your Neighbor. And I identify as a Black woman.
Hi, I'm Marcus Lickeren, part of the Fathers Group and a community member as well. I work at TOCC Community College, and I identify as African American. My pronouns are he and they, and I'm looking forward to being a part of this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Anybody else?
I just wanted to turn my camera. Hi, I'm Liliana. My pronouns are she/her and they. I identify as a queer Chican X, and I am here with the Latino Community Association out central Oregon and the Restorative Justice Equity Group. Thank you so much for creating this space, and I'm really excited about the potential for more representation in city councils. So thank you for being here.
Thank you, everybody. I think all of our BIPOC committee members have introduced themselves, right? All right, so I would like to share a little bit of the format of this event. We will be having a conversation shortly. We will be hearing from our city council member candidates. They'll have a chance to introduce themselves. Then, we will have some preset questions that this group helped put together. However, we had 16 questions, and we were not able to... We will not be able to go through all of them in this conversation, so at random, we will pick six. And these questions, you'll have a chance to answer them. Please stay within one minute if possible. We will give you a 45-second warning, and they will be projected on the screen as well, so you can see them. The questions, after we are able to ask questions, we encourage the BIPOC committee members to ask follow-up questions. You can put them in the chat. And also, please be mindful that after we wrap up our first six preset questions, then we'll be able to open it for a session of Q&amp;A, where we can have more open dialogue. All right, so with that said, I would like to invite our candidates to introduce themselves. And if you feel comfortable, I can put a list to just call you, or if you feel just comfortable going on your own, I can do that as well. Well, I don't see anybody jumping in, so I'm gonna go ahead and then call in a certain random order. Please, Megan, go ahead and introduce yourselves.
All right. Hi, my name is Megan Perkins, and I'm really happy to be here tonight. I'm running for city council because I love Bend, and I want its growth and prosperity to be shared by everybody. I identify as a white cis straight woman of privilege. For the last few years, I've really been on a journey with racial justice work. Two of my children are Black, and as they've grown from, you know, adorable little babies to toddlers to young kids, and now one that's almost a teenager, I've become more and more passionate about protecting them from trauma and changing things for their future. In 2018, I co-founded Embrace Bend, a nonprofit organization dedicated to dismantling white supremacy through learning opportunities, community care, and organized activism. Right now, on a seven-person board, I am the only white cis straight person. One of the things that I've learned during this, on this journey, is that I don't get, you know, a woke pass for having Black children. I don't get a pass for growing up in the Boston Public Schools or having Black friends. I don't get a pass for voting for Obama. I need to do this work just as much and maybe more than other people, and I really owe it to my kids. But, you know, even if I didn't have Black children, even if, and I'm gonna paraphrase something I've heard Dalton say a couple of times, even if there was not a single person of color in Bend, we should all be talking about the importance of diversity, equity, inclusion, and we should all be doing the work. So I'm running to ask our community, you know, what kind of city do we really want to live in? Can't we be, you know, a welcoming city like we claim? We are on the city's website. Can't we realize that, you know, DEI is not just a committee? It's a lens to really evaluate everything that the city says and mandates. My campaign values are inclusion, access, and economic equity. And I'm really running to center people on issues that are normally left from the table. And I really wanted to do more than just listen. I really want to share in decision-making. And when I talk about access as a value, I mean that the current model of city council does not represent access for and listening to all community members. And finally, when I talk about economic equity, I mean housing, transportation, and childcare. When one of these three things are missing or inadequate, it creates an unsustainable living situation for Bend's population. So I'm really, I look forward to learning tonight from this amazing panel, and really thank you for the gift of allowing us to learn from your experience.
Thank you, Megan. Please, Kat, share a little bit about yourself.
Hello, everybody. My name is Kat Mastrangelo, and I'm running for seat four on the Bend City Council, and I identify as a white cis straight woman as well. And my pronouns are she and hers. The reason I'm interested in running for city council is really based, I'm inspired by, and it's based on the work that I've been doing over the last 15 years, being involved with volunteers in medicine. We have changed from a clinic that has always served the uninsured, but the face of the uninsured has changed dramatically. So when the clinic first opened, it was mostly white people, because most of Bend was white. And then, once the ACA went into effect, almost overnight, our patient population changed to 90% Latino. And we had an organization that was middle-class and white and traditional, with big hearts taking care of patients that were Latino, Spanish-speaking, and mostly immigrants. And that was a really big change that we had to overcome. And I think we've done a good job, not without mistakes and not without, in hindsight, wishing we may have done things a little better or maybe a little faster, but we have come a long way. And part of the inspiration of that is we now have, with our over 200 volunteers, we have over 200 ambassadors in our community understanding more about the struggles of the Latino community and the fact that Bend is not white, and it's more than white, and it needs to be welcoming to all. I have heard that, I believe and I have heard, that housing and equity are important in this community. The people I'm speaking to really care about that, but they don't necessarily know how to get there. And so that is what I'm really concerned about in city council, and part of what I will bring. I'll bring my experience and, and just, I'm also here, and I'm really interested to hear from you all, and hope that I am not doing all of the talking tonight and that I'm listening at least twice as much as I'm talking. So thank you.
Thank you, Kat. Anthony, would you please introduce yourself?
Yeah, hi, everybody. My name's Anthony Broadman. I'm running for position two on Bend City Council, which is currently held by Councilor Mosley. I want to thank Indivisible and Vocal Seniority for organizing this series, and especially this event tonight, which is, I think we're all here because we recognize the critical moment we're in as a country and the critical moment we're in as a city. I'm a lawyer. I identify as white. My pronouns are he/him/his. I represent primarily federally-recognized Indian tribes throughout the West. I represent civil rights plaintiffs in federal court, 1983 actions. I represent small businesses in Bend. I've raised all three of my daughters here. They're all Ben Lapine public school students. They are my life, along with my wife, who's a pediatrician at Bend Summit, I forget what we're calling now, BMC, sorry. So I'm running for city council because we need a city where the promise of this place is available to everybody. And the city council is a policy body. It's a land use body. What can we do to make concrete changes to our city to make sure that that's the case? One, I think we can have a safe, connected transportation system. One, that if you're a kid and no matter what corner of the city, no matter what color of skin you have, that you have a ability to get to school safely. You can get to parks safely. That it's connected across the city, across the central district, which is our most diverse neighborhood in the core area. We need actual affordable housing in the interior part of Bend. And I know you're gonna hear throughout the next few months that we need affordable housing, but it's true. We cannot afford to live here. We cannot afford to have businesses grow here if people can't afford to buy homes and rent houses in Bend. This is an equity issue, because it impacts people of color much more than it impacts the majority-white community in Bend. We need to make sure that the city is a partner to workers, essential workers, people of color who are bearing the brunt of this pandemic. We need to make sure that the city is a partner to small businesses, minority-owned businesses, as we frankly survive this pandemic and then emerge on the other side, hopefully, as a more just and equitable place. We need to plan for growth. We need to plan for the next 50,000 people here. And like Megan said, truly be welcoming, so that the next 50,000 people here are truly welcomed, no matter whether they're white, or whether they're Black, whether they're Indigenous, whether they're Latino, Asian, or other people of color. So we need to, again, make sure that the promise of Bend is available to every single person who lives here, the person who was born here, the person who moved here 10 years ago, the person who moves here tomorrow. Every single person needs to have the promise of Bend available to them. So thank you again to Indivisible. Thank you to the Vocal Seniority. Thank you especially to the community leaders who are here. I know, I think I know how much has been asked of you in recent months, and I'm extremely grateful for you being here, educating all of us, and giving, being so giving of your time. So thanks to everybody.
Thank you, Anthony. Melanie, would you please introduce yourself? We can't hear you.
Can you hear me now? Okay, sorry about that. So my name's Melanie Keeler. I'm running for position one on the Bend City Council. That seat's currently held by Justin Livingston. I am running because I think it's time for some fresh, energetic, and progressive leadership on our council, and I want our council to reflect the community of Bend and the values of the community of Bend. A little bit about me, I grew up in Bend. I graduated from Bent High in 2001, went away for college and law school, came back a couple of years ago because my family lives here. I want to raise my daughter here, and I just wanted to come back to the city that I loved. And I know so many people in our community feel the same way about our environment and, you know, the people here, and the city that Bend has been and could be. You know, I think people really see that there's a lot of promise here for what Bend could be, and that's really why I'm running. So I was around in Bend as a kid. I've seen the changes. I remember going to school here. I know that we are a diverse community, more diverse than when I grew up here. People do say, you know, that Bend is very white and homogeneous, which is true, but I want to also acknowledge, of course, we have folks here, and we have more and more folks here that are from diverse backgrounds and life experiences, and we need to truly be a welcoming city for all the people that live here. A little more about my background, I spent five years as a state prosecutor, and I focused on domestic violence crimes, so I have worked within the criminal justice system on that aspect. After that, I moved into becoming a legal advocate for victims of crime, working through a nonprofit legal organization called the Oregon Crime Victims Law Center. So in my job as an advocate for victims, you know, I've advocated for people who've suffered greatly, who've experienced systemic racism and just mistreatment in the criminal justice system, as sometimes crime victims can suffer. And part of my job that was most important was really being able to listen and hear to those people that have been through a trauma, and then help them make their voice heard in the system. And this is a system that they're not familiar with, that they don't necessarily normally have agency within. And so I developed the skills of being able to listen and then affecting that voice and making them feel heard in the system, and that's also the skill I want to bring to city council as well. I've been following our current council, and I don't feel that they are listening to all the voices of the community. I don't feel they're truly hearing all the voices of the community, or even, sometimes even seeking out all the voices of the community that they need to be listening to. And I know we want to be a welcoming city. We say we are. But I think we really need to take some concrete steps on becoming a city that welcomes all the diverse communities that live here and embraces social justice for everyone, and actually listens to Black Indigenous people of color when they talk about how they experience racism and discrimination here. We really need to be a place where Black Lives Matter, where our leaders actually take real actions to break down systemic racism, to look internally, to look into how our city government works, as well as to lead externally in our city to help get us to that place we need to be. And candidates have touched on all the areas of city council decision-making, where we need to bring that equity lens, and we need to have input from members of the community that don't normally give input, and that's including affordable housing, our creating of an equitable transportation system, even the way that we look at how we combat climate change. All of these areas that the city works in could be improved, and I want our city leadership to step up and take responsibility for doing that work, for addressing racial justice issues in our city, and for really listening, learning, and then acting on what we learn. So I'm really excited to be here tonight. Thanks, everybody, for participating, especially to our community members. I know this is hard work, and you're working hard already these days, so I really appreciate you being here. And I realize I forgot at the end, because my mic was off, but I identify as white cis woman, and my pronouns are she and hers. Thanks.
Thank you, Melanie. Rita, please introduce yourself.
Hi, my name's Rita Schinkelberg. My pronouns are she/her and they/them. I'm running for Bend City Council, position four. I identify as a queer person of color. And why, why am I running for Bend City Council? Why did I think that I wanted to take on this journey? Is because I really want to see people like me in leadership. So I do my best when I see people like me leading in the community, and so I hope to inspire others. I really was quite fired up when I read the Bend City Council statement connected to, around the murder of George Floyd, and I was appalled. And I really, I had many discussions with many different people, and that's really one of the major sparks that brought me to running for Bend City Council, because the lack of equity lens, the violence to Black Indigenous and people of color in Bend by that statement scared me. I was scared. I thought of all of the people like me that live in Bend, and I was like, how are we supposed to protect them? And so I took the leap to begin to run. And so a lot of the policies and a lot of the things that I support in my campaign have an equity lens on them. So the first is community. So representation really does matter. So having someone who is queer, a person of color, someone who rents and isn't partnered and doesn't have a family, that's a lot of individuals in Bend, and they really need to have a voice when we're talking about affordable housing. I never think or have ever dreamed of being able to own a home in Bend, and I really want to make that dream true for me and many other people. When I talk about transportation, I walk and ride my bike to work, and I did to school, and it doesn't feel safe. And so how do we make that accessible? How do we make bike lines, bike lanes, really defined, so people feel safe riding their bikes? And then, the community piece, I mean, when I find other people of color in Bend, especially Philippine X, I get stoked. I'm so excited to see other people in the community. When I get to see Philippine X food trucks and anything that connects me to my culture, it's something that excites me. So that's really why I'm running, and I'm just so grateful for all of the community members here and for having this conversation, even though I didn't get a whole lot of time. This is one of the main reasons why I'm running. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. Donovan, please introduce yourself.
I'm Donovan. He/him. I'm a white male. What the main reason I'm running is, as someone who's grown up in Bend, I can see how difficult, as if you're not really rich, to live in Bend it is. And I can't imagine, from my experience, how much more difficult that must be when you have the additional societal racism on top of that. Like, as someone who just hasn't, like, it was a struggle to go through a lot of my life as we, my family has been rich. We had to deal with a lot of the issues that are come along with being low-income. And I understand that while that's, that's my personal lens on this, a lot of, again, there are a lot of compounding factors, especially in minority communities, that exacerbate those issues that are already existing. I want to, I want to work towards making it so that those things have a lower barrier entry to ease what, what difficulty there might be on gaining housing, having a reasonable job here that can actually support that housing, being able to get to your job safely and efficiently and in an ecologically conscious manner. And right now, the people on the council, some of them seem to be trying to work for that, but some of them are, seem to be actively working against that. And I want to work my best to listen to the people in the community, especially the minority people who, again, as Rita mentioned, don't have a lot of representation in our local government. That's why I've been trying my best. Like, I'm young, but I'm, and I don't have a lot of previous government experience, but I saw that there was an issue in our current government, and I want to make sure that all the people in our community are hurt, especially the people who normally don't get to be heard.
Thank you, Donovan. So we've heard from all of the candidates we have in this call, and we've got a chance to meet Black Indigenous and other members of the community of color here in Bend. And before we get to our questions and our discussion, I do want to let all the viewers know and acknowledge that along our communications, the folks that enroll a little bit closer to this date, we're not able to receive all of the questions that we'll be going through. So Donovan and Rita will be answering at the end of the questions to give them a chance to get their answers a little bit more particular, right? But we appreciate all of the candidates for being here. And before we start with our questions, we would like to acknowledge the land we stand on and the land Bend is in. Bend, and all of central Oregon, is occupied territory of the warm springs Wasco, Batu, and other Native tribes stretching from the snow-capped summits of the Cascade Mountains to the Palau's cliffs of the Dishes River and beyond. We honor and thank them. We hope our work disrupts and dismantles colonialism beyond this point moving forward. Thank you. So we will have preset questions. Okay, would you pass me a jar here? Thank you. So right here in this jar, we have little pieces of paper with all the different numbers. However, to get some common understanding, right, to get some common knowledge of what we will be working on, the first question will be a preset standard question that everybody will get a chance to answer. And the idea is that that will help us as members of the communities of color to better understand the values and the knowledge that you have regarding racism, right? That is something that affects all of us, and that is unfortunately prevalent in Oregon and in Bend. So the first question is, what is your understanding of systemic and institutional racism? And how do they show up in Bend? What is your understanding of systemic and institutional racism, and how do they show up in Bend? We also have a list, a randomized list, for our candidates to answer. So I will just go ahead and use list one. Just keep it in mind that we will give Donovan and Rita a chance to answer towards the end. So Anthony, please, go ahead. So Anthony, please, go ahead. Help us with question number one. And Sid will be putting the questions on the monitor for us.
Okay.
You'll have one minute, try to keep it within that.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, Joanne. For me, systemic racism in Oregon starts with the Land Donation Act. I represent tribes, so I'm still litigating cases in federal court regarding deceding of lands through treaties, the disenfranchisement of tribal people throughout Oregon. If you don't know, basically, the prime example of systemic racism in the state where we live, for me, is a few parts. One, if you were a white male, you could come to Oregon and you would be given 320 acres. And that was all that needed to happen. You just had to be white. You just had to be me. You walked up and they gave you 320 acres that had already been taken from tribal people. It obviously continues with that through history. Black people were not allowed to live in Oregon. And then even after that, basically, shame was erased formally from the Constitution. Latinx people, Asian people, tribal people, Black people were not allowed to own property. So for me, systemic racism starts there and it continues through today. The inability of minority-owned businesses to get adequate credit, the fact that we have the lack of diversity in Bend is not an accident. It is a result. You can draw a straight line from the dispossession of the land that we are all standing on right now, from tribal people, to the fact that people of color are treated differently in the criminal justice system. People of color are treated differently when it comes to buying a house. And people of color are treated, in my work, very differently when there is a mental health crisis. White people are treated as if it's a health crisis. People of color, Indigenous people, are treated as if it is a law enforcement interaction.
Thank you, Anthony.
Thanks.
Sorry, we have very short time for everybody to participate. Next, we have Megan.
Megan, your microphone. Sorry. Yeah, I mean, to piggyback off of Anthony, I mean, it's the entire history of Oregon, right, is like the definition of systemic and institutional racism. One of the things that I've learned, you know, since being here, right, it's in hiring, you know, it's in hiring with like barriers for non-white, non-English speaking applicants. And it's in, you know, commerce by being followed around a store if you happen to have brown or black skin. It's, you know, the schools brushing off, you know, a racial slur by saying, oh, but he's a good kid, you know? My friend Terrell always says that Bend is racism with a smile. And I think that one of the things that white people don't, white people miss it, right? But it's there, and it's there every day.
Thank you, Megan. Melanie?
Thanks. Yeah, I think that's the fundamental concept of systemic racism for me, is that it's based in how this country was formed, in the white supremacy that this country was founded on, and the fact our country and our state are built on the back of slaves and subjugated Indigenous people. I mean, it's always going to be with us as long as we don't reckon with that history. And that has rippled forward, like Anthony said, into current day. We have, you know, there's a line between that and the police brutality that brown and black people experience, and including things like the war on drugs, the school-to-prison pipeline, the things that are built into our systems of education, policing our government and how people access it, voting, you know, and then the historic practices in housing and employment lending. Those things did not just go away. They maybe got quieter, they maybe were shoved into corners, but they're still with us because we haven't reckoned with why we ended up with those systems in the first place. And I think in Bend, you know, I know and have heard of people talking about receiving racial slurs yelled at them in our town. There's a lack of access for people that don't speak English. In my work, I know, like, at our courthouse, I think we're just now giving some signs in Spanish for people to access justice in our courthouse when they come in and need to figure out where they need to go. And we have hate crime here, you know, both reported and unreported. And in this moment right now, we have protesters standing up for the human rights of Black people and getting a gun pointed in their face on the streets of Bend. So we're not immune to systemic racism. It still lives here, and we need to face that.
Thank you, Melanie. Kat, would you please join us next?
Excuse me. So the other candidates have really talked about some of the historical basis of this and coming from expertise from the legal system. So I'm just going to take this time to talk about a little bit of racism in the healthcare setting. There are huge disparities in health outcomes based on someone's race, and that is not accidental either. All of the drug trials and are done on people who are white. We don't consider that there could be other populations that need different treatments. When you look at the historical pieces, like the syphilis trials up through COVID, where we see minorities and people of color having much worse outcomes and dying at much higher rates and becoming infected at much higher rates, that happens because we have frontline workers. And even just the response of the federal government now, requiring that frontline workers return to work even without safety precautions in place, sets up a situation where populations are just more at risk. So historically, you know, I grew up in the deep south and the small town I grew up with is still experiencing racism, is still struggling with the legacy of that. The county I grew up in had lynchings back, and not even that long ago. And that is a history that we don't know about. So I think that's another systemic piece, is that we're not taught history. We are taught mythology sometimes, we are taught how we'd like it to be, it's whitewashed. And that's another really important aspect of why we are where we are today.
Thank you, Kat. Just to remind our candidates to join a little bit later, what is your understanding of systemic and institutional racism and how do they show up in Bend? Rita, please, thanks.
Thanks, Joanne. So I work as a mental health therapist that work with youth on probation and parole with Oregon Youth Authority. So I actually experience this on the daily. The majority of the youth that end up in my office are people of color, Black or Indigenous humans. They tell me stories of the brutality as children they have experienced in the Oregon justice system. The juvenile justice system is inherently racist in the ways that they train their staff and the way they interact with our clients. Not only that, but as we look at the school-to-prison pipeline that Melanie just mentioned in her answer, the school-to-prison pipeline really targets people with lack of resources, which historically has been people of color. And so as our youth continue to move through the school system, they are, they continually have a lack of resources, and then they're punished for it. They continue to be punished for it until they get criminal charges. And then when those criminal charges get quote-unquote "bad enough" from the perception of the police, then they end up with me. And so youth have to live away, youth have to live away from their families and away from their culture and come to Bend. And then they come to Bend and they feel as though they have no culture. You know, just in a very prime example is, I was talking to a youth, and they were looking for food that they really, really wanted from home. It's their birthday in a couple days. And of course, I can't find it anywhere in Bend. I have been followed multiple times in stores. And so, oh, I see you, Joanne. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Rita. I know it's very hard for candidates. They want to really connect with our community and share their background. But in the spirit of wanting to have many topics covered, we need to keep it concise. So Donovan, this will be your turn. What is your understanding of systemic and institutional racism and how do they show up in Bend?
So I'm gonna start with something that kind of relates to what Anthony was covering. So again, where we live right now was essentially built and taken front of the people who were previously living here, natives. And they're essentially, those acts that were proposed or put in place then are still on the books even. Like, there's a portion of the Land Act that Anthony was referring to that is still on the books, still allows people to claim federal land that was already taken and as their own. It's still, all of the things that were put in place, many of them haven't been reviewed. There's no one actually going and looking and saying, hey, that's, that's a problem. We need to take that out. It's actually in power. A lot of that work has to be done at a more local level, where the people actually are investigating what issues are, what's still on the books, so that they can actually change that and enact stuff, that remedies or the previous and past justices that have afflicted the people that live here. What I've seen in Bend specifically is, the city website does not appear to have a lot of, well, the majority of it in Spanish. And as someone who's grown up here, I've seen that there's a large Spanish-speaking population here that I've, I've interacted with. And just the fact that the city doesn't offer that for many of its resources, really, I can see that would alienate part of the population that really shouldn't have to deal with that. They should be, they should have the resources tendered to them in the same way that anyone else, any other community member should feel. Another thing that I've also seen, as it's very difficult for me personally, without coming to these groups, which is why I'm here, to see a lot of these minor injustices being faced on the people. Okay, I saw a reality advertisement that was essentially saying that it's good to move to Bend because there's a white community. And that was shocking to me, that someone might have, might feel safe to make that judgment.
Thank you, Donovan. Thank you, everybody. That's been our first question to kind of let us understand a little bit of the background information, right, that our candidates come with the understanding of how racism, systemic, and institutional impacts our communities. So now we are going to start with the randomized questions here. So first question is going to be question 13. Sid will put it on the screen. And question 13 is, how will you leverage your position to make Bend, particularly places of interest like tourism spots in town, more accessible, inclusive, and especially safe, considering armed white supremacists present themselves downtown during peaceful Black Lives Matter protests, and in which many children were present and involved? So how will you leverage your position to make Bend, particularly our tourism spots, more accessible, inclusive, and safe for communities of color? We're going to go with, again, another randomized list. Kat, please, go ahead first.
Unmuted. Okay. So I think the first, the first thing that we could do as a city council and as a city council person, it would be to denounce the use of intimidation and weapons to break up or intimidate people who are trying to peacefully protest. I mean, the First Amendment comes before the Second Amendment, and it needs to be unequivocal. It needs to be soundly, and the city council with one voice saying, this is not okay. I have protested myself, my children have protested, and I have witnessed that sort of intimidation. And it takes a lot of strength and courage and to stand up to that. And we need to be encouraging people to let their voice be heard, not trying to silence them. I think that the days of having a double standard, if it's somebody who looks like, you know, they look like a white supremacist, we don't arrest them. But if a person of color came armed the same way, they might be arrested, roughed up, sent to jail, and that also, that disparity is not okay either. So holding the police accountable, if there are, if there is going to be enforcement, because I would imagine, I'm not an attorney, but I can't imagine that we don't have laws against that. And I see you waving your hand, so thank you.
Thank you, Kat. Megan, please. Sid, can you help us by putting the question on the screen? And Megan, when you're ready, please go ahead.
All right, thank you for this question. Actually, Embrace Bend, our organization, you know, wrote a letter, an open letter to the source about this very subject, because it was, it was really scary for a lot of people in our town to, you know, see at nighttime, you know, a bunch of, you know, white supremacists with assault rifles protecting our town from rioting, when every protest was incredibly peaceful. And I was really concerned personally with the sort of lack of, I was really concerned that the chamber, the downtown, you know, and Business Association and the city didn't do more to really squash these rumors that there were people, you know, that Antifa was here with, you know, rocks and they were going to destroy our city. So I think that the city could have done a much better job of communicating that, look, these people are peacefully protesting. There was no need, you know, for you to be protecting us, and by the way, we would like you to leave our city. You know, and you really need to start working with the police better to, for the police to be able to speak out as well and squash these rumors and say, you know, things are safe here and people are peacefully protesting.
Thank you, Megan. Now we will have Anthony.
Thanks, everybody. Yeah, I mean, I think you can see that there is a different approach in different cities to dealing with these white supremacist counter protesters and the so-called Boogaloo operations, where folks are coming in and pretending to be security to prevent against peaceful protesters. So I don't believe it when I hear that the city couldn't do more. I know we could have done more. We have an obligation at city government to set policy. That policy then goes to the city manager, who's the only employee of the city council, and then the police need to carry that policy out. So I'm far more concerned about BIPOC protesters who are being threatened by white supremacist counter protesters than I am about a lot of the other issues that we're hearing about in other cities right now. Those are important. We need to make sure that we are progressive and Democrats and Republicans aren't engaging in the performative BS surrounding this topic like politics have been as usual. Let's do something specific when we see a guy trying to drive a car into a group of peaceful protesters that simply cannot stay.
Thank you, Anthony. Melanie, please, would you share with us?
Thank you. So I 100% agree that I think the city can be doing more on the communications front here. And that includes, first of all, community, communicating that we are a local government that's aligned with anti-racist values, and reacting to situations, like when people are saying that there are busloads of folks coming here to riot, like Megan said, like, the city has a communications arm that I think could have done more to combat that and to let the public know that that's not what was really happening. I, the city council, and I'm sure we're going to talk about this more, the city council oversees the Bend Police Department. I would like to see, I don't know what they have, but I would like to see and know what their policies are regarding these type of people that show up armed with weapons. I was down there one afternoon. It was definitely concerning, and I know I'm not really the target of their hate. So how awful is it for the folks that are witnessing that? And what are our police doing about that? And what's their policy? And when are they going to step in and say, this is gun violence? I have been an advocate against gun violence, and I consider displaying a gun to indemnity people a form of gun violence, and we have to take a stand against that. So I think our city could be doing more.
Thank you, Melanie. Donovan, how will you leverage your position to make Bend, particularly places of interest like tourism spots in town, more accessible, inclusive, and especially safe, right, given that we have armed white supremacists during peaceful Black Lives Matters protests?
Well, as previous candidates have stated, I think we do definitely need to use the avenues that the city has to communicate. Uh, well, as, as uh previous candidates have stated, I think we do definitely need to uh use the avenues that the city has to communicate properly and ensure, like, ensure that people understand the actual situation as opposed to what uh is being dispensed online through alternative channels. Also, uh, I, I was just looking this up to, because I wasn't certain about what I had uh previously understood. But technically, uh, what those pro- counter protesters are doing could be considered a class A misdemeanor. And we could, uh, legal action could be taken upon them. According to ORS uh 166155, uh, a person commits a bias crime in a second degree if the person intentionally subjects another person to offensive physical contact, or no, not that one, uh, or is it uh the uh subject or other person to alarm by threatening to inflict serious injury or commit a felony affecting the other person or member of the person's family. I would say that coming to a protest with a gun suggests that you are uh threatening serious physical injury upon the people that are protesting there. I believe that that is uh unacceptable for armed counter protesters to show up uh to uh in, to purportedly defend businesses that do not need defense from a, an entirely peaceful gathering.
Thank you, Donovan. Rita, would you please um share your perspective on how to leverage your position to make Ben particularly places of interest and tourism uh more accessible, inclusive, uh and safe, particularly in the face of white supremacy?
Um, so as a person of color, I was down at the protests and most of the protests have organizers. And those organizers are very clear in their needs during those protests. And so they are usually pretty good about communicating that to the Bend Police Department. So one of the major things they could do is listen to the people. When those protesters are, are organizing, they're like, this is what we need, this is what we don't need. And the police should be there to protect the protesters. As Kat mentioned, um, you know, it's their right, it's their right to protest. And intimidation has really been something that's been part of the entire system. And so it goes back to policy a lot of the time and putting that equity lens on all of the policies, including the policies that Bend City Council oversees the police department, not instead, not separate, but across the board.
Thank you. Any member of the BIPOC community, person in this call, uh, that would like to ask a follow-up question? Going ones? Yeah, Janet, go ahead.
Um, so this is somewhat directly tied to the Black Lives Matter protests and what we saw from the white supremacists, white nationalists that were present there with uh their assault rifles strapped to their, their fronts using these intimidation tactics. We have an incoming chief of police from the Portland Police Bureau um that we know um historically is probably one of the most violent um and racist police bureaus out there. Uh, what would be in your position, uh, what would be your response to this incoming chief of police if no action is taken for further protests or further incidents when uh we are confronted as BIPOC uh with these white nationalists?
And any candidate that wants to answer can jump in.
I'm happy to answer um regarding the new chief. Um, I, I've spoke, I've spoken with the city manager about this. I've spoken with some of the other candidates about this. I think this city council needs to have a much stronger role in the hiring process of the top three personnel in um, in the city, including the chief and fire and rescue chief. Um, the city manager, as most of you probably know, right now, the city council only has one employee and that's city manager Eric King. I, I also would um hope and, well, frankly, I will insist as a citizen or as a public servant that the um, the activities of the Bend Police Department are consistent with Bend values. Um, I, I think there's no place for CS gas in America. Um, I think we're going to look back in five or 10 years and be pretty ashamed of um what we as a country have allowed to happen over the last five weeks when it comes to um hurting peaceful protesters. So um, I will insist as a citizen, I will insist as a public servant, if I'm honored enough to serve, that um, you know, all of our, all of our personnel reflect the values that we as a community hold.
Thank you, Anthony. Another candidate that would like to have comments?
Um, I can go, Joanne. Yes, okay. So um, as I had previously mentioned, the city council does kind of oversee um the police department. And I think as a counselor, um, given the history of the department where our new chief is coming from, given the amount of time that he worked there, um, I do have serious concerns about Bend Police Department's culture and how that might change. Um, and so I think as a, as a person overseeing that department and sort of as a policy um person in the city regarding our police, I would want to put in place policies like, like Anthony's talking about, um, about how they're going to act when protesters um are in our city. And like I mentioned before, I would like to see specific policy about um, the sort of white nationalist, white supremacist presence. Um, and I think I am going to be asking for regular updates, regular reports on use of force. Um, and if there is a particular incident that needs to be looked at, that is brought to the attention of the council by the BIPOC community, um, you know, I'm committed to looking into that as a counselor. I think that's part of our role. So those are things that I would do.
Thank you, Melanie. How about one more candidate? Anybody that would like to add to this conversation?
Um, I'll jump in. Um, I think that um that just because we only have one employee, which is the city manager, does not mean that we cannot um request information and response from anyone or any of the departments of the city. And so if we felt that there was not an appropriate response or a good enough answer, I would expect us to be asking for such a report and having the um, having the police come and talk to us about that. I think we also need to remember that in Bend, we can be as good as we want to be within the city limits, but we also operate in a county and in a part of the state that does not always see things the same way. And so if we're going to be a welcoming community, we need to make sure that we are working together with the Chutes County Sheriff, um, with Crook and Jefferson Counties to also make sure that as we are welcoming people, that they feel safe not only within Bend, but in all of Central Oregon.
Thank you, Kat. So just to make sure that we're fair in the next question, um, uh, for the follow-up, we'll have the other candidates that didn't get a chance to, to engage to do so, okay? So we're going into our next question uh here from the jar. It is question number three. Question number three, and that is, what do the DEI Diversity Equity and Inclusion Task Force recommendations means for marginalized and underrepresented communities in Bend? How do you see these recommendations shifting the way we govern in our city and what do you think is missing? We will already go, we will again go in a randomized list. Um, and this time, uh, Melanie will have a chance to go first.
Thanks. Um, so I have been following the DEI Task Force meetings and the recommendations that are coming out of there. Um, I think they're a great first step in provoking a culture change and bringing some real meaningful participation um by BIPOC in our seven, in our city government. Um, I'd like to see the rec- recommendations implemented in a way that honors the intent of the, the committee to center marginalized voices, to allow the sharing of power and decision-making um with those people in our city that have been underrepresented historically. So I think one of the things, main things I heard coming out of those meetings is that we need a culture change within our city. And um, we, the, the community wants a human rights commission that can hear about incidents of discrimination and try to help resolve those as well as do that sh- uh sharing of power and helping in decision-making with the city. So I completely support that model. Um, and I look forward to advocating for, as a public member, as that decision comes up before council.
Thank you, Melanie. Kat, you're up next.
Um, I agree with Melanie that it's a, it's a good first step. Um, and it is just that. I think that um part of the work, I know in my service on the Bend Budget Committee as a volunteer for the city, I received um, a survey for the first time last week to find out how I identify. And I'm really hoping that that survey is going to be a baseline to see if we are actually making any improvement in the participation uh cross, across our community. I think that um it's hard to hold ourselves accountable if we don't have that kind of information. So I think it's a good first step. Um, I really hope that we don't just put all of the work of DEI into a commission or a committee. I really think that it needs to be embedded across the city, within every department, within, it just needs to be the lens with which the whole city um does all of its work. And that doesn't happen overnight. It's a bit of a journey. Um, but I really hope that five years from now, that we are having a much different conversation about this.
Thank you, Kat. Um, next we have Megan.
Yeah, I mean, I think it was, it's a, it's an excellent first step. I'll, I'll repeat what, what uh Melanie and Kat have said. Um, I think, you know, the, the city got off to a real late start with, with this uh, with, with this DEI um, uh, their goals and this commission. Um, but I love the fact that it's not a performative, you know, it is not a performative advisory group, that it has real meat to it. It's a human rights commission. You know, it will be hearing people's um complaints. It will be advising on policy. There's decision sharing. Um, you know, I really like the, the, the focus on um improving uh, you know, access for marginalized communities to committees, it, you know, so they can be more of a part of the city. Um, like, like Kat, my, my real concern with it is that uh with the recommendations is that there's real, there's no real burden on the city council itself to really change the way that the city council does things. You know, and I think that we're, we're putting too much of a burden on a group that maybe just meets once a month when, you know, this, you know, this, this, this lens and this work should be done by everyone in the city. Um, and, you know, we also really need to make sure that we have the right council to really shepherd this through.
Thank you, Megan. Rita, please, would you go next?
Um, so as I was reviewing the goals, I just feel like those goals are really just building awareness. And so I think that it is really helpful that Bend City Council has an awareness of the systemic racism and how there isn't equity in the policy, but that's about it. How do we apply it? How are we supporting people? I mean, I think the Human Rights Commission is also a really good step, but it's also putting pressure upon the BIPOC community. It's really not talking about changing the white lens and the lack of equity lens that is perme- permeates through our entire government, right? So, the, right, as you all can actually respond. Um, so when we look at laws, when we look at policy, it was written by white people for white people. So how exactly are those supposed to support the BIPOC community? Cause even as I'm reading them, I'm wondering if they're going to support me and I'm a candidate to be on the Bend City Council.
Thank you, Rita. Donovan, would you go next?
Uh, so I, I, I think a lot, some of the stuff that they're doing, uh, again, good first step, but uh, it seems to be lacking a lot of the actual capabilities to hold the people in power accountable for their decisions and actually uh ensure that they're enacting the change that they suggest they're going to, uh, or they say they're going to do. I think it needs um, it, it needs additional capabilities to be able to enforce and uh ensure that the, the goals and the uh that they're trying to meet are actually accomplished as opposed to just, we're an advisory committee. Here are some things you should do, but really, we can't actually hold you accountable. We can't, uh, we can't make you uh actually listen to us. That, I think it needs additional uh power to be able to uh make sure that the needs of the people of color here are actually met. Uh, currently, it seems like it's just, uh, again, it's, it's, it's for awareness. It's so that the people uh actually know what's going on, but really, it's not making them do anything.
Thank you, Donovan. Uh, would any member of the BIPOC community would like to ask a follow-up question regarding the uh DEI Task Force uh uh and the recommendations they're putting forth uh to the city?
Do I get to answer the regular question, Joanne, or do I wait for the next one? I'm sorry.
Did I skip you? I'm sorry if I did. Anthony, please.
Okay, no, I, and I can be skipped. I just.
No, no, no.
My wife calls me impatient. I'm really impatient about this topic. So um, I, I mean, I want to take the, the, the bigger view here. We, this city has had a Cyclops KKK mayor. That is a fact. That we had a mayor of Bend who was in the KKK. That should tell us all how far we have to go, that we're talking about a DEI Task Force. It's critical that we do a lot more than a task force. I agree with everybody that it's a framework. And in a lot of ways, we could s- get to stand on the shoulders of giants, the people who have worked really hard to get us to where we are, but I'm impatient. And I want to seize the momentum we have as a society right now to do concrete things, to make Ben, to make America a more just place. We need to look and fix qualified immunity. I've advocated for that. It's not a heavy lift. It's something we can do to make people safer in Bend right now and protect people's rights. We need to do the little things like ensuring that committee membership uh doesn't require US citizenship. I was able to advocate for that last week and the change should be made um in the next couple of weeks. That's not a heavy lift, but these are micro changes we can make to make Ben a safer place um for everybody. Let's use a cahoots model like is used in Eugene to address mental illness crises instead of policing homeless people and communities of color when we're having a, a public health incident rather than a criminal incident. So, thanks.
Thank you. Uh, would any member of the BIPOC community like to ask a follow-up question regarding the DEI Task Force recommendations?
Um, I do, this is Kina. Um, I do have a quick follow-up question. Um, you know, I think almost all of you had mentioned, well, several of you had mentioned um accountability. Can you elaborate a little bit more on um how you see accountability, accountability manifesting itself through the recommendations uh from the DEI Task Force?
And for these, uh, well, we'll have Rita, Donovan, and Megan. Go ahead, Rita.
And so, so what we know when we address white supremacy and we address how white supremacy permeates through our entire governmental system, it's about the people in leadership being held accountable by doing their own work. Them really truly understanding how white supremacy lives in their own bodies and that when they're making decisions, they're coming from that white supremacy lens. And so the accountability will be on them to do their own work on top of the recommendations that Allyship in Action has put on them, well, discussed with them and agreed upon.
Um, Megan or Donovan, will one of you want to go next?
So, so I'll go. Um, yeah, cause I want to jump off from what Rita just said. I totally completely agree with you. Rather than a series of like you know, sort of after uh makeup of the council. Um, but part of that is, is just sort of think in this, this, this thinking that, you know, that it's just a
It looks like we lost Megan. Um, we were having um problems with her connection. Uh, but Donovan, would you please um uh join in this conversation? What did you see as accountability from the city council?
Yeah, uh, I, I'm gonna say yes. We, we do need the P councilors and the people who are in power to do stuff outside of what they just hear. I've been trying to reach out to other uh minority groups around Bend and see what they have to say and actually understand their, what their view of the current issues that are facing their communities in here. I entirely lack that lens. It's really difficult for me to go uh to I entirely lack that lens. It's really difficult for me to go to actually have that experience. I need to, so I've been reaching out as best as I can in between working full-time to actually find out like what the, what are the issues that the community has around here? What can we do to make sure that they're heard as opposed to just assuming that the advisory committee is enough? I, I, just, it, just an advisory committee is not enough. We, we needed to go out there and make sure that each individual councillor is pulling their weight and finding out what issues are affecting the communities around Bend that aren't getting heard enough.
Thank you, Donovan. So I want to be respectful and mindful of everybody's time. We started at seven, five thirty and we will be wrapping up at seven o'clock. There are a lot of questions that we didn't get a chance to go through. But I think the really important piece is having a conversation, a dialogue. So now I would like to open the floor for any member of the BIPOC community in this call to ask a question for all of our candidates. If there's anything, you know, from our preset list of questions or something that, that you find to be very important, please go ahead and share your question.
Um, this is Kina again. I want to be mindful of the space that I'm taking up, but I also want to, you know, leverage this opportunity to speak with y'all. So I guess the question that I have is, as candidates for city council, what actions will you take or what platforms will you leverage to get to know members of the BIPOC community in Bend and to understand as closely as possible what they, we, what we experience on a daily basis simply by being BIPOC people?
I'm not going to go first again, so somebody else could please.
Yeah, Joanne, I don't know. Do you want to call a list, a randomized list and have folks answer these?
Because it is a Q and A. I think I, I recommend each one of you to take this opportunity. I, I think that it's more organic, right, if people jump in because they have that drive to share something.
All right, I'll, I'll start again, but I'm not going to go first again because I, like Kina said, I don't want to take up too much space. And so I think personally, what I will do as a city councillor is I, you know, I commit to showing up in spaces where there are communities of color, of going out into the community, of reaching out to groups proactively and saying, I'd like to talk with you. I'd like to hear from you. I'd like to listen to you. And I think that's part of the role of a city councillor. And so I, I want to do that. And I want our city, this is one of the questions we didn't get to, but I want our city to completely rethink public comment and community engagement. And the way that it's set up right now for city council, it's like if you can't come on Wednesday night and you can't, right now, if you can't be on hold for an hour on the phone, you don't get to make your live comment to council. And there's a wide swath of our community and especially BIPOC, BIPOC communities that are being left out in that process. And I've never heard someone give a comment in Spanish at a city council meeting. So I think we need to really rethink what we do there and how we can go out in the community. Can we go to places where we know people already are? Schools, you know, food banks, shelters, other places where people we're not hearing from are there and get their input that way. And that's what I think we should do as a city and that's what I want to do as a councillor.
Thank you, Melanie. Another candidate that would like to jump in this conversation?
I think we need to have more people at meetings. I think we need to pay people to attend, feed people to attend, provide childcare, which is a proposal I made with councillor Campbell and has not been acted on. And we have CARES Act funding, I believe, to do that through this calendar year. I think we need more voices at city council meetings. We need to change the time that they are to accommodate working people, working parents, not just a bunch of lawyers like me sitting in the back row taking notes. We have to do more. I think we need to continue to do it online. But I, I think the critical thing here is that these, you know, these meetings have to have more involvement of people whose lives are deeply affected by the policy decisions that city council is making.
Thank you, Anthony. Anybody else that would like to jump in this conversation?
Could we please have the question repeated, Kina?
Oh, yeah, sure. So the question was, hopefully I'll remember it correctly. The question was, what actions will you take or what platforms will you leverage to get to know more people of the BIPOC community and to understand as closely as possible what we experience on a daily basis?
So as a person of color, I do have a little bit, a little bit, I have plenty of lived experience of what I've experienced in Bend, dealing with white supremacists in Bend, dealing with being menaced and profiled in Bend by store owners and other individuals. And I also know because of my mixed identity, I still have privilege. And as I still have privilege, I will continue to reach out to other individuals in the BIPOC community to hear their voice. During this campaign, I've had multiple conversations with multiple different people to get their perspective. When I don't know the answer, my go-to is really to ask questions to people who might and really listening to them, taking notes, giving them space, and then bringing that information back and making sure it is heard by all people in leadership.
Megan, Donovan, anybody else that wants to jump in this conversation?
Yeah, I would love to. Sorry, my Zoom crashed twice, so I apologize. I think I got cut off last time. Yeah, I mean, one of the things that I see is that, you know, the current city council expects people to come to them, right? And as, as a city council, we should be going into these communities that we represent. And that means, you know, just talked, and when it comes to, you know, I think that the city council should travel. I think that we should have, you know, when we're not in a pandemic, of course, I think we should be having city council meetings all over the city. And I think we should be, you know, holding community forums, you know, and when it comes to talking about, you know, the transportation bond and, 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 you know, big issues that affect our city, I don't think we should be having them at the chamber. I don't think we should be having them at the city club. I think we should be having them in the communities that are most affected.
Another candidate that would like to answer this question?
Yes, so. I guess I'll talk then. So I, I, I think it's certainly the council's responsibility to go out and be proactive in finding out the opinions and how any decisions are going to impact people of color and minorities in Central Oregon. We need to step up and make sure that we're going to those meetings by those people of color and finding what they're, what they're discussing. We need to make it more accessible to those people. I think what Megan has suggested there is definitely a great idea to go and visit different areas of the city where it would be more accessible to people of color and minorities and other people who just don't have the time to meet at the normal scheduled time. And I, we, I, like, I personally, I'm going to try and reach out and go to as many of those forums as I possibly can and reach out to those people because I, I assume that I don't have the answer as a white male to the issues that are facing the community. I, I want to go and reach out to them and find out what they have to say about those issues so that their, their input is, takes the forefront of how we're discussing the issue.
Thank you, Donovan. I believe Kat will be last, and then we have one more question.
Terrific. So I love this question and I think, just to add to what everyone else has said, I think that the, I agree with Melanie, that the process of trying to make public comment is, it's intimidating. It is difficult. It takes just an inordinate amount of effort. And we need to proactively be reaching out into communities to ask the questions where people are comfortable and provide alternative ways to provide that kind of feedback and to actively seek it. And if that means sending out surveys, if that means building the relationships with the different organizations that represent people who have traditionally been left out, I think relationships are really, really important. You, it's just, it's not a transaction. You know, we live in this community together. This is not a transaction. It's a relationship and that takes time and that takes conversations and that takes listening. And, and it takes taking advantage of invitations to speak and to come listen. And I would hope that with all the candidates that we have here, if we are able to flip these seats, to change these seats, that we will start to really see a difference on the Bend City Council.
Thank you, Kat. We have a couple of questions in the chat. Dalton, did you want to ask one of those questions or your own? Your microphone?
No, I was suggesting that we read Erica Mackel.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dalton. So the question in the chat says, it appears at times that all decisions are made by the city manager. How will you make your voice or collective voice of the council known to the public? And does it help if I read a list that way? Do you all get to? Okay, thank you. I will do that. All right, so since this one is not pre-established and we have it in the chat, I will start with our younger, newer enrolled candidates so we can give them an opportunity to be seen and heard. It appears at times that all decisions are made by the city manager. How will you leverage your voice or collective voice to connect with the public, right? Donovan, will you please go first?
Sure. So I, I think we need to, again, make it more accessible to other people what the decisions are being made at the city level government. As I previously stated, much of the website that the city of Bend has is not, is, is only available in English. I think we need to expand that to Spanish to be able to better reach more of our community. I think we need to be more transparent with how we announce the meetings and the resolutions that are made during those meetings to the public. From my understanding, these, the city's social media presence is not, not that great. I, I feel like that could possibly be employed as a tool to better broadcast the information to the people who need to hear it. I think we need to take input from the community if how we're not, how we, how we're providing the information is not sufficient and, and/or if we need to provide in different, different formats.
Thank you, Donovan. Rita, please share with us.
Thank you for the question, Erica. I, I agree. As I was reading that question, I was like, mm-hmm, yes. So what I do know about the city council's kind of onboarding or council training is that we get a lot of time together to kind of get to know each other, start to understand city government. And during that time, we can use, during that time, we can use that time to really get aligned with our equity values as a council. I mean, I've had many conversations with the candidates on this call and they are asking, they are very fervently asking, how do we bring equity and justice to city council? So we have people motivated and excited about it and we just all need to get on the board and have that conversation together.
Thank you, Rita. Megan, will you please go next?
Yeah, I mean, I agree that, that right now I don't see the, the council operating with a collective voice at all. And that's something that, you know, we, hopefully, if, if, if all goes well in November, that we will have more of a collective voice because these candidates on this call share a lot of really, really important values for, you know, and share, you know, a, a real, you know, desire to make the city, you know, a, a more inclusive place. I, you know, seeing sort of the process with the city manager and the, and the police chief, I think the city council does need to be more involved. I think at times the city council is a little bit too standoffish and, you know, kind of receives reports, but really doesn't get involved in the nitty-gritty of a lot of these really important decisions like a new police chief. And that's something that I would like to see changed.
Thank you, Megan. Anthony, will you please join us next?
Oh, thank you. I, I think that Eric will follow clear policy direction. I think a good city manager, which Eric is one, will follow clear policy guidance from council. I think to sort of reiterate what everybody said is that he's not, he's not getting that in, in every circumstance. He's getting, he's getting people taking political stands, which at the end of the day, this is a volunteer, essentially, public service position. This isn't the US Senate. So and rather than taking these strange politically calculated stands, let's just ask what's best for the city. And I think that if we communicate that clearly to a city manager, that, that every good city manager is going to carry out the policy direction of the council. I also think it's really important to have Eric give his report at the beginning of meetings. It's tacked onto the end. It's in many weeks. It's the most important, you know, 10 or 20 minutes of conversation. We have to start with that. And I think that also there has been, there's been at least one councillor who doesn't communicate effectively with staff. There have been councillors who will lambaste a staff member instead of just giving policy guidance. And I think that that's kind of provocative. Thanks.
Thank you, Anthony. Kat, would you please go next?
Sure. So I, I really like a strong manager in the form of government. I think it is better than politically led cities where the mayor has all the power. And I think we do have a good professional staff and they need to be allowed to do their job. I agree with Anthony that we need to be giving clear guidance. And the, you know, the council in some ways functions like a board and we need to have robust debate about policy decisions and about budgetary decisions and about all sorts of decisions. But then once we come to a decision and it's voted on, then we all need to be on board that we've made the decision for the city. And so the city manager and the staff have a clear direction of what it is they're trying to accomplish. I think we need to be looking at outcomes. I think that we can speak with a voice to answer Erica's question. And, and the question is about, you know, if, if the city manager does everything, how do we speak with that voice? We still have that opportunity. We have certainly ample time in council meetings to say what we think about things, to support or not support or modify. And I think that, that would be the venue and that would be the way that that would happen. So I, I really appreciate the, the Bend City Council. I appreciate the Bend City staff. And I also think, kind of tying back into Kina's question before, as we start having clear policy direction about the inclusion of the BIPOC community, it's just going to be embedded within the city because we're going to have more city employees who, who look different or who represent different communities. And they're going to be at the table as decisions are being made on implementing the policy. So if the city council talks about the why and they talk about the what, it is the city staff that really determines the how. And so we just need to be aware of that.
Thank you, Kat. Melanie, your turn.
Thank you. Thank you for this question, Erica. And I think it actually touches a bit on an issue that I would like to tackle. I would like to look at, we are, we are a city of over 100,000 people. We have volunteer councillors that receive pretty much, we've received like a tiny stipend. And the amount of hours that I think a good councillor and the type of council that I want to be, will put into this job will include trying to have a voice outside of council with groups, trying to have office hours or coffee meetups or something where we can be accessible to the public, working on having a social media presence, not just for the city, but for myself as a councillor. I'm already working on that. And some of that is driven by COVID and the lack of ability to meet in person, but we also reach a different audience. And some of that is driven by COVID and the lack of ability to meet in person, but we also reach a different audience that way. So I think this is part of a systemic issue with how we treat our counselors in our growing city. And I think we can look at our structures and even the structure between the city manager and the, and the city council a little bit if we want to do that. That's something we can do when we, when we come into those positions. And I want to look at how we facilitate this position to be a place where a counselor doesn't have to be a white wealthy woman to feel like she has the time to engage with the community and have that public voice.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for being here. We have one last question if I can manage to use my computer properly. And this one is an easy one. Please lift your hand, raise your hand. Where is the question? Oh, I lost it. Oh, okay. Please raise your hand if you oppose having a community review board and please tell us why you oppose that. Raise your hand if you oppose having a community review board and please tell us why.
I'm going to ask a clarifying question and I'm assuming that you mean a community review, excuse me, community review board for the police. Is that correct?
Marcus, would you like to clarify that on the chat? No, so the question is, do you oppose having a review board for the city? And please tell us why. So is it safe to say that all the candidates in this call support having a community review board for the city of Bend? If that is correct, please give us a thumbs up, raise your hand, let us know you support a community review board for the city. Awesome. All right, y'all. Well, it's been a little bit over an hour and a half. We had a very interesting and vigorous conversation regarding racism and the issues that impact Black, Indigenous, and other communities of color here in Bend. Please make sure that you keep up with the Vocal Seniarity and Indivisible Bend, who are continuing to have these what's-a-state conversations with the candidates. You can see their information right on the screen, indivisiblebend.org, thevocalseniarity.org. Thank you, everybody, for your time and we hope to see you next time.